Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Scholbers, can we take a quick recess in the bathroom?
Yes. Yeah, just five minutes. We've had five minutes. The consent, I hope you've all had a chance to look at your board packets and read them over. And if any time I'm cramming any item, you got questions about, so have none. Consent items, I hope you've all had a chance to look at those. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion. Okay, any discussion on this? Let's do a roll call. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Said yes. Superintendent actions, you've all had a chance to overlook at those. You got any questions? Anyone? Donald Gorm's new business, new policy, four point two one two virtual education program. You've all had a chance to look at that. Do I have a motion on it?
Second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Manning, second.
Who is first?
John. Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Policy amendments six point three oh six, six point four zero eight one, six point three oh six point one. These are just policy amendments. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Okay, we're coming down to employee salary increase request. Do I have a motion on that one?
Yes, sir.
Second.
I'd like to discuss this.
Any discussion?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Discuss it. I know during this topic stuff has been a little rough, especially for our teachers and our staff. I was wondering if there's anything we can do, if we can do any more than 3%. If there's anything in the budget that we can do.
We can do whatever we want to, but we got to look at this real current expense. This is almost a 10% raise over the last four years. And we haven't asked anything of the county either, so.
What about any kind of bonuses for our teachers or anything with any kind of COVID money that's come in? Is that possible?
I don't know where any we could put it in and ask for it on the, uh, as.
This is across the board, isn't it?
Yeah, this is from, uh, everybody. It's got a, yeah.
Well, now, we finally did get to include the caps.
Yeah, it's in there.
It's in there. We didn't do that last year.
We didn't do that last year. We didn't. But everybody, we didn't play up.
We figured stuff out this time, but didn't last time. And I think maybe so.
But I reckon, way I understand it, everybody insists about 3%.
Good night, the breakdowns, all right, too.
Any more discussion?
Is there any way we could separate this out? The board voting for itself own raise, I mean.
We're not.
We're not voting for us.
They're not over us. We're not. We're not an employee of the system.
No, we're not an employee.
We're not considered that.
No, we're not even considered an employee.
All right, that's good. That's what I was concerned about.
If you want to bring it up, we'll take it.
No.
Yeah, that would work. It'd be fine if you want to give us all the raise, that would be good.
Yeah, we're all in it for the money.
Yeah. Okay, uh, any more discussion? Not have a roll call. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Said yes.
I, I do think we need to look at, maybe give, look at a bonus if possible. Look into that.
Okay, bid approval for liability property and casual insurance coverage. Can you make a touch on that? You got, oh. Mr. Phil, any questions? Got any questions about the policy, uh, Mr. Powell and Moses is here.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
On the automobile part of this, that's a pretty big chunk of the policy, if you'll think about it. And I was wondering, what part of the, what is this, what automobiles is this covering?
You could probably get that covered.
That's.
All vehicles on the body.
Any vehicle we've got. He made the rain, it's, uh, he made the rain.
We're gonna sell, we're gonna sell, just secure the line, we have around the not for. We don't have any cars like a lot of system that, that, that teachers use, but, but we do have several vehicles. I'd have to get you to that vehicle count.
I missed, I mean, I'm just saying, if you look at that policy and you look at that one, that one line item of $40,000, that's a, I mean, that's, to me, that's a big chunk of this policy. And I mean, is it, can it be singled out and puts, beat it, beat it out somewhere else on the other?
Well, but see, the problem with that is, I mean, you got to look how many vehicles is on the road. It ain't a half a dozen vehicles.
This is also school buses, everything.
Yeah, that's everything.
Anything.
Anything that's, that's got wheels and roads, other than, uh, uh, other than a, uh, wheelbarrow.
That's ridiculous.
Well, I had a question mark, I wrote down buses in a question mark, so it does include buses.
Anything that rolls.
So, but it is, I'm just for our, no, our mistake, but it is a bigger portion of the, of the policy.
And it would be, uh, I'm a, you know, because there's so many, the board of education owns so many vehicles.
Could we get a list of that and see how many, I mean, I'd like to know how many.
You're probably running four or five thousand miles a day, if you got our separate achievement.
Talking about the whole system?
Yeah.
How many vehicles you think we're covering?
We run twenty-six routes and probably fifty buses.
So, how many other cars? If you was roughly making a case?
I have to go back, but we got five, six maintenance, no, we got five, six maintenance vehicles. Each school's got, uh, two or three more vehicles, so I just have each of those to be, to be exact.
Okay.
Is this the only bed we had? Yes, yes, I, yeah. Make motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any more discussions? Not just a roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just.
Let me back up on that.
Well, still, yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Yeah, I kept looking at them. That's okay. Next item on the agenda is to elect your board chair and vice chair for twenty-one, twenty-two. All in favor?
Yes, sir. I'd like to ask the board for your consideration to retain Mr. Scholbers in the role that he's in. Uh, he's, you know, he's done a pretty good job.
Good job.
Done, and he's kept this thing rolling along and, you know, it's a lot of time. He's got a lot of experience that the rest of us don't have, and stuff I think he served as well. So, I, I'd like to recommend that, and I might get a motion if that's, if I have a second.
I'll second.
I was hoping you wanted to get a second. Easy, easy. All in favor? I oppose. Now, we're going to elect the vice chairman.
Are these for one year or two-year spots?
One year. Uh, I'd like to, uh, I guess I can do that, being chairman, I can, um, ask that we leave everything the same. Mr. Lewis, if you would accept that for one more year, I would like to make that motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? I. I want to thank y'all for the confidence. Any one of y'all, we'd been more than glad to. Because I think we need to be ready for that, with it, just, just push both, man. Well, thanks for being here. Okay, we've got a discussion. Uh, we're going to discuss the student enrollment numbers for twenty-one.
It's in your package there. It's basically exactly like it started last year. I think today, that were dead, I don't remember when to, but let's count it. It's probably about 200 or what we ended at at the end of the year. The buildings are more full because you've got nine on vertical, so to speak, where you started over there. That number, because you had three some forms on vertical.
Uh, when we began last year.
On vertical, I gave you one wing vertical, but that really makes your buildings, that gave your principals a lot more room. I know several of them is about to the max. We talked about that for some time, and hopefully, with short term, we'll be talking with the county commission. I talked to, to, uh, Mr. Mason, he's well aware of the situation, and, uh, hopefully, we'll be working closely with him. And, uh, months coming.
Any questions? Any one about roll?
I noticed that, uh, Wombsville High School, ninth grade, it's grown quite a bit.
It's a monster class, so I think saving the one class is smaller. It'd been on a normal year, they're, they're already busting. Sean, you're, I call them shoeboxes, basically, that's what, but your boxes, you got every box. Somebody in it, but.
We got one.
You got one, but, but you grow one more, but you can grow within, but we said when we done that, that was only going to be a, you know, a two, three or five year fix, and it's about to that level.
Our numbers grow about twenty or so from the world.
Does it look like it's going to continue to grow?
Well, we're getting ready, it's across, you know, from, uh, from housing permits and so on. It looks like we're fixing, you know, and I have not been told one removed. I guess that, that wouldn't work for James Court, but I think he's three pretty sizable, uh, uh, subdivisions that are looking at coming in. You're not counting, really, so.
So, what do you start looking at, expansion?
Yeah, we got, got to, got to something. And I mean both sides, it's not just.
Yes.
Yep.
Any more discussion, anybody? Okay, school board retreat. Gina, have you got any? I think we all, if I should agree with everybody, instead of everybody running nationally, different times, can we still do that, have them come here?
Yes, yes, I just need permission to call and get some dates, and if you would give me, do you like the month of January? Does that work for everyone?
Everybody does want to do that. Were you good together?
Good, all, everybody like we did last year, everybody together and do it one day, do it all day. Preferably, I know last time we done it, uh, pretty close to a board meeting, it was the same day. That way, if we could get that work this time, other words, do that and then go right into our board meeting. If that's okay with everybody? Any? It might get a long day, but it's all done in one day. So, everybody good with that?
So, move for the January board meeting day?
Then try to work into that.
Oh.
You've all had a chance to review your policies. Uh, you got any questions on those? Not, uh, Mr. Winkler, you have any, say, you just say. Okay. Mr. Glover, you want to help?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. We need, we need to have an, uh.
Special call meeting?
Special call meeting over this COVID issue. I think we need to check on this contact tracing and, and, uh, look into what some of these other counties are doing. Especially the Putnam County and some of these others that I, I spoke about earlier.
As soon as possible.
I'll second that.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
Do we do it this, how quick could we do it?
Okay, now, Mr. Winkler.
Mr. I just wanted to mention, Mr. Jones brought up in a work session, this board could always suspend the rules to, to vote on the matter. But, but again, it was my, considering the sensitivity of this issue, to make sure you get a motion that you can fully understand and get that data. I just, he's absolutely right. You can always let you suspend the rules, but, um, it would be my recommendation, it may be specific in, uh, in this instance.
If it's all right with everyone, I, I'd like to have a little more, you know, a little more information about what we're going to do right here. Uh, this is a, pretty sensitive. I saw it was sensitive.
I sent, I sent an email to the director. That's kind of like what I would like to go by and what I think they're saying.
I think I said, oh, you took much to one from you.
So, if we could get that through to you, too, if it was.
Good answer, question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like, second, if you want to make, before you talk about, I could, I mean, simplicity to it, and we've looked at everything else, but can maybe try to work through COVID, so I mean, it's just a fair bit of that.
We've got to find a way to get these healthy kids back in school.
The only thing that I will say, I second it, I might be presentable, because I, I'm all in favor of us doing anything we can, but I cannot do it this week.
Okay, but what are you talking about? Any time? One day, two days, 10 days?
I, I think notice just has to be reasonable, so.
Now, what are you saying, reasonable?
Uh, if you got it out on the website, ideally to give it in the paper, but there are other avenues in the county, but you can post the notice, and I think you could just find it.
Okay. Mr. Lewis didn't say he couldn't do it this week. What about the following week?
Well, but it will be on Friday.
I'm available whenever, I, I, as soon as possible.
But we can't change policy till we have a meeting and vote, right? We can't change the, suspend the rules and then have a meeting and vote and speed this thing up? Is that what we could do, Jamie?
But you can need to know what you're voting on.
Sir?
I said you can suspend the rules and change it, but you need to know specifically what you're voting on.
But again, I'd like, I want more information before I suspend any kind of rule.
Okay.
Uh, well, now, that runs into conflict with a lot of people's sports, so. But, uh, next week.
Friday evening, there's no ball games around here, right? So, move Saturday.
Talk about you cut to accommodate for more people?
I might end this Friday, because I believe.
Which, I thought we were trying to get rid of stuff.
Till we get, till we get things together, then, how can we do, can we get all of our numbers together and facts and things?
And is that considered reasonable? Of course.
Three days to ever put it on the website, put it out, or it needs to go.
Three days is reasonable.
Yes.
I think you need to help the department if she'll come, sure.
I'll reach back down to her.
Again, try to get, we asked.
And I don't think it's a lack of her not wanting to come tonight. I want to say that on her behalf. Um, we just asked her, you know, this week, so she sent me information, and I've shared that with Mr. Smith, and I can share that with all of you all. What she has replied back to me on how we would do, do it, as I discussed earlier in the work session. And so I can share that with, Mr. Smith can share that with y'all, or I can share it with you all.
When you said, uh, yeah, I, I would really like her to have a year, because when you, if we turn this over to the health department, and you told me all the hoops that we're going to have to run through getting this child tested and getting it back.
But you wouldn't have to.
It's not, it's not a matter of testing, it's a matter of the contact tracing. So, the way I read it from, um, the health department here, what she has sent me, what I've sent to Mr. Smith, is that we would continue to have to go into the classrooms and determine those close contacts. We would then write that on a, a form that the state has come up with, that some districts are using. We would have to write the, um, child's name and a parent, a guardian's name, and a phone number for them to contact. I would then forward that information to the health department, uh, most likely to Lindsay Gold, she's been my contact. And she would then have to forward that on to someone at a regional level. And then that person would be the one that, once they got that information, would have to then start contacting parents.
And correct me if I'm right, if I'm wrong, you know, but there's no law stating we have to send that to the health department, correct?
But we have not been.
Then we have.
I know there's, I know there's other counties that, that's cut the health department completely out.
I know, but you have to include the health department, obviously, so you have to include them.
I agree. But we're still contact, we would still contact trace, but we would send a letter to the parent, and let the parent make the decision of whether to keep their kid out or send them, send their healthy kid back to school. So, I, I really believe we're leaving it up to the parent.
You're just wanting to eliminate the staff, excluding them from school.
Excluding?
You want that, you're saying you want us to keep everything else aside. Because that's the only stuff you're wanting eliminated.
Correct, I, I want the parent to make the decision to send their, keep healthy kid to school or keep him in.
We don't got a motion in second here, and, uh, everybody in favor of this?
What's not?
Well, what not? Friday afternoon?
What time?
What Friday? What Friday?
This Friday. That's what he said. Can't do it this Friday.
Yeah.
You can?
Yeah.
They, they can't. Well, I wished everybody would be here, I mean, this is a.
This'd be the good time for me, I'm just saying.
It would, it would. Your Saturday, Monday here. What about Monday?
Yeah, what about Monday?
No, I can't, I got a doctor's form.
Monday, you have a doctor's form. What's Saturday?
I'd be here Saturday morning.
Yeah, Saturday morning. Breakfast, I can't do it Saturday. I'll make breakfast.
If y'all won't mind, I cannot be here, my son had a dispersed respiratory.
What about, uh, what about Tuesdays? Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Can't do it Tuesday, Marty.
We need to make time for these kids, we got to get them in school.
I'm looking at Thursday. I know that's quicker.
Is it Thursday?
Yeah, I could. But, no, you can't, Friday's the only day you can.
I just came, followed, come back in great, but, I mean, I could Friday, but I just got too many.
What, I know it's church now, but Wednesday, what about Wednesday, early?
This Wednesday?
Yeah.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Early as possible, if we have to.
I won't, I can't be there, I don't care, I don't, Nashville, y'all.
Yeah, I'll get tomorrow.
I don't care. Tomorrow?
I'll go back, Wednesday week.
Wednesday week, I've, I've got another doctor's form in Nashville on Wednesday, so.
Well, then put you back down to Thursday, then. No, they fast forward.
Do we have to be, I mean, if you want to do it without me here.
But he does allow, we can, he can say, be in.
Can.
Also, you have an electronic attendance policy.
Can, yeah.
If he's, if he's got to be somewhere for work, and I assume he does.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Then, um, then he can do electronic. You have a policy that allows that outside of the COVID stuff, you've got an electronic in.
So, Tuesday.
So, Mark, all right, you can be on one Zoom, and so we get, make sure you're set up.
And I, I'm about 90% sure I'll be out, but if I'm not, I'd like to Zoom.
Uh, if we can Zoom, can we do it sooner?
Do you ask, do you hear this question?
I don't like Zooming, I'll be honest with you. I mean, that, I just don't like, I don't think it works. I just don't like the Zooming part. I've had to do it myself a couple of times, and I'm not, I don't, you've had to do it a few times, and it's just, it's, uh.
But I'd love to come, but I, I can.
I mean, my issue is, my daughter's sitting at home right now.
Yeah.
Not getting an education.
Well, I, I feel for you on that, because I got a granddaughter, son, wait, my granddaughter's sitting at home.
And there's, there's how many kids? We got a list right here of, of amount of kids that's sitting at home for exposure. Do you see them five o'clock?
We need to. Do you see them five o'clock? That? Do you see them five o'clock? All in favor?
You got a virtue?
Yes, sir, probably.
That's it. August twenty-fourth.
Anything else, not have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Suspend the rules and break, go back to something else about pay again. Can I get a second on that? Do I need to suspend rules, ask for a second, go back to discuss pay?
What you've already voted on?
Uh, well, well, we've already voted on, but I don't.
Are you asking to reconsider it?
No, I'm asking to increase it.
But that would be reconsideration. You can do that in the same meeting, you just a motion to reconsider, because you're still in the same meeting.
That's what I'm asking for, if I get a second.
And now, you would have to. Second?
No, you're not having this, you're just, that would just be a motion to reconsider what you've already done in the same meeting.
I'm asking for it.
You're okay.
So, I'm ready to go, or I have to have a second?
You have to have a second.
Second.
And you have to take a vote on motion to reconsider, get off and say back to.
Is that for the night? Is that going to be for the night?
I don't.
Have motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I, I'll try to be brief. Those of y'all that have sit on board faces I've been on here, I have argued about this pay every year. I've argued about it, trying to structure that as far as five years, to give them incremental steps. Argued about it last year for our custodians and people to get a little bit better raise, because we didn't get a cafeteria people last year, or we did this year. And, uh, and it just bothered me, I mean, for me, uh, morally and ethically, I don't think we can put a dollar value on what these employees are worth, and particularly, you know, the last one month. But, uh, I mean, 3%, boy, is that's, and I know, Mr. Smith, that's going to be a whole lot earned in that year. You know, and I know, and I know in last year, I'll give it, that would have done 10. But, you know, let's, let's go back just for a second to that. What would it cause? I'm not mad at the issue, you can have it, but, uh, they've had a tough time, too, y'all. I mean, there's no way we can give a bonus of some kind. I, I mean, some.
I feel the same way, that's why I voted.
A one-time bonus.
One-time bonus.
One-time bonus.
Call it COVID bonus, I don't care, but they've had a hard time.
Because I do know other counties have given bonuses to them.
I'm just saying, but.
You know what kind of percentage?
I do not know, I do know that some of them, uh, I believe Wilson County was like $1,200 or something each.
I mean, most what I've seen wasn't necessarily a percentage, just a flat dollar.
Yeah, a flat.
Yeah, a flat.
But, but I'm just saying, Dr. Cruz, I, I mean, it's a way, I know money, money, and all this other, but, boy, it's been a young.
But it's been a little one dollar amount, not, I mean, I come up with that.
Yeah, are you, you're not saying dealing with the 3%.
No.
You're saying on top.
I just tell you, it's like one-time bonus right now, in addition to that 3%. Because, well, two reasons, number one, 3% ain't nothing, but the other one is, everything they've had, showed through all this COVID and everything, I mean, go with y'all. Some, I love some, I'll get it.
Well, my question then is this, why did we rescind our motion to talk about giving a bonus? We rescinded the motion.
Didn't reconsider.
To reconsider the motion of the 3%.
Dragged it up to it.
Why couldn't we just suspended the rules and talk about giving a bonus? Because right now, the 3% is off the table, unless we revote on it.
Yes, but he was talking about going back to that, so that was what you had to do.
I'm just, but what's.
So, whoever makes the motion has got to put the 3%.
Back in this.
One time.
Just question, question is, is where's, where's the money coming from for the bonus? Where, where we coming?
I mean, have we got some?
Well, that's, that's the first question.
But first, you got to go back to how much, then you know, he, I mean, you can't tell him.
He's got, like, that's, uh.
That's right, but you've got to have an amount before you go any further.
Don't you think an amount would be sort of, I know, the amount would be fair to all teachers, would it? One flat amount?
That's what you're talking about.
Well, I know, but that's not fair to all teachers.
Why?
Well, you got a teacher here going 20 years, and she's going to get the same as somebody been here a year.
You get into all of them.
Maybe a percentage of.
This, this, don't go by that, Mark. This would just be like a COVID bonus, but this one doesn't go to talk about.
This is an appreciation for the stuff that they've had to put up after the last.
Is this across the board on everybody? Or is this just teachers?
No, it's everybody or nobody, my thing.
Yeah, I think it should be everybody.
Talking about bus drivers, you're talking about coaches, managers, you're talking about everybody, any full-time employee, yes.
Well, that's really, you can write, come up with.
But dollar, Matt, this is going to be a chunk of money.
Yeah, well, because you're looking at over 400 employees, guys.
That's what.
500 employees now.
Yeah.
And I, I like the idea about a one-time bonus, other than upping more than what was given on the 3%. Because 3% is reoccurring, guys. That means every year from here on out, you're going to pay that money every year.
But, yeah, it is, but what I'm, the bonus, I'm asking, one time.
Yeah, one-time bonus needs to be separate.
That's all, one time.
But we need to figure out where we can get the money, and then how much money can we spend, you know? Like, right now, if you got 500 employees, you give them $1,000, that's $500,000. Where you going to get that?
You're saying, what are you going to get?
$500 is $250,000. So, we got to find money to get that. Not saying I'm against that, but.
Let me do this, then, because maybe, uh, maybe that's a difficult question for the president director right now, until he has time to defend that. So, I won't make a motion and see if I can get a second about that. Make a motion that would continue forward with the 3% raise that we have given. And ask the director to provide us information at the next board meeting, what would cost to give a one-time bonus. Pick the dollar values, I don't care, um, you know, I don't care if you want to say $1,000, $70, $50, whatever.
He needs to find out.
Yeah, structure it down through there and see what we can afford to do.
Teachers.